I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. If you don't know me, my name is Stan Edwards. I'm normally District One Commissioner, but tonight I'll be filling in as Vice Chairman. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order and I'll ask Commissioner Mason for the invocation. And Commissioner Cowan, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Let us all bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place of business one more time. We thank you for all that you've done for our community and all that you are about to do. We ask that as we move forward to do the business of Newton County, that you would go before us and behind us and go with us. God, give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding that we need to help take this community to the next level. God, we ask that your presence will be here, God, that you will continue to unify our community with love and with a sound mind, God. And we know that a lot of the decisions that are made in this community are challenging, oh God, but we know that you are with us. You said that your Spirit will be with us, and so we just thank you for your presence. We ask that you would allow us to make the decisions that's needed for this community. And we'll be forever grateful and thankful, and we give you all the kingdom honor and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, our thought for the day is be a light, not a judge, be a model, not a choice, be a part of the solution and not a part of the problem. And that's from Stephen Covey. At this time, I would like to use Chairman's privilege to remove item number eleven from your agenda. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Have a motion or have a second? I'll second. Commissioner Cowan will second. Commissioner Mason and Commissioner Cowan. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I pass three zero. Item number five on our agenda is citizen comments, and these citizen comments will be for agenda topics only. Please state your name and address for the record. All right, agenda item number six, reports from the county manager. Mr. Brown, first of all, let me say, Mr. Brown, thank you for filling in for Mr. Cooper tonight. Mr. Cooper is out of town with his daughter and cannot be here tonight. Mr. James Brown is filling in for him tonight. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Vice Chair. I'd like to recognize Walker Hughes, one of the nonprofit ARPA recipient.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Greetings, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, members of the dais, and everyone present this evening. Tonight, you'll hear from our last local community nonprofit organization to receive ARPA funds. As demonstrated throughout the year presentation, these twenty-five nonprofit organizations represent the heart of Newton County. In total, we dispersed over one point three million dollars to twenty-five nonprofit organizations to help the citizens of Newton County. Commissioners, thank you for your commitment and dedication to the citizens of Newton County and the place that we all call home. Thank you. Now let's welcome Gail Rothman from the Newton Education Foundation with the book bus to the podium. The Newton Education Foundation received thirty thousand dollars in ARPA funds. Ms. Rothman?
Thank you, Walker. Good to see you. Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to be here representing the Newton Education Foundation for the first time. I hope you all know what we do, but I'm just going to let you know that the Newton Education Foundation has been around serving this community since two thousand nine, when a group of local business leaders and residents established the foundation as a way to support students across the county. It was started with some splotched funds that were left over, and when donors were given the option of whether to get their money back or to put it towards supporting children across the community, they opted to start the foundation with those funds. We relaunched the foundation in November when Dr. Duke Bradley III joined our community as the new and fantastic superintendent, and we have been working in partnership with the district since the relaunch with great success. You Commissioners agreed to, before I got to the foundation, when Patty Baldwin was here, she submitted the grant, and you generously awarded the foundation thirty thousand dollars. I am excited to let you know, and there are some photos that Ms. Hughes provided, that we were able to use that thirty thousand dollars, all of it, to go towards supporting the book bus. If you haven't seen the book bus, if you're from Newton County, chances are, if you've been here a little while, you've probably seen this amazing mobile library bookstore cruising around the county. The idea of the funds from the ARPA grants specifically were to help us get more books into the hands of lower-income students of all ages across the county. We know that COVID disrupted schools everywhere and that those most at risk, lower-income communities and families were hardest hit, and there was lots of concern, and there still is, about how that would impact literacy rates and success in school. So, the book bus, which was started by the previous superintendent Samantha Fury, it's a repurposed school bus, and we've had a wonderful visit from some of y'all from the county, from Mr. Cooper's office, to come out and see the book bus and load some donations that you all collected. The book bus got some new shelving as a result of this grant, and we were able to purchase some costumes. So, the book bus rolls up to a community, and then costumed characters often accompany the driver, get the students super excited about books, and then the students are invited to line up, come through the book bus, where it's set up like a little bookstore, and they can choose age-appropriate books to their liking. This ownership of books really encourages literacy in the home. Often that moves to not just the student, but to siblings, younger and older siblings who read the books and read to each other, and also to parents who may also have literacy struggles. So, the book bus is just a great asset to our community, and that infusion of thirty thousand dollars in grant funding means we will be able to continue giving out books as we did throughout the past year-plus and on into the future. And the foundation will continue to find ways to make sure we're getting books into the hands of children. If you don't know, we have a real literacy problem, I'm sure you know, and literacy rates at some schools, using a third-grade measure, they vary, but some are under twenty percent of students reading at grade level, and we really need to make that a top priority, which we'll be doing in conjunction with the district and with Dr. Bradley. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but really, I'm just here tonight to thank you for the support. We're grateful and honored to have received funds along with so many other amazing nonprofits in the county. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions, any comments? Thank you so much for what you do for the community.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Mr. Brown, do you have anything else?
Yes, I'm going to go over, the county manager report continues with the purpose, people, purpose, and processes. Our work is predicated on the three Ps, the three Ps approach. This presentation will focus on the first P and its people. And we're going with the infrastructure team. Development services, as you can see, the report out for April, May, and June. For April, they collected one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. In May, they collected one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. And in June, they collected one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and three cents. We go over to public works, and we have those work orders broken down again by month from April, May, and June, and it was also broken down by district. So, the total work orders that was completed is in April is five hundred and seventy, May is four hundred and ninety-four, and in June is four hundred and thirteen. Overall, they have had a hundred and forty-seven work orders that have been completed across the county thus far. For the second quarter in two thousand and twenty-four, forty-seven full-time and part-time staff has been in that effort. They've also clicked, the cleanup crew picked up one thousand four hundred and sixty-three bags of garbage and took twenty-seven point three tons of trash to the landfill. Solid waste, as of the fiscal year begins, they've sold, four thousand five hundred and twenty hang tags have already been sold in Newton County. On June ninth, there has been a routine compliance inspection that's conducted on Lower River Road landfill, and the facility received a passing score of one hundred. Transportation, these are the projects that's listed for the current projects for as of seven thirty twenty twenty-four. And you can see the various stages, even some are under construction, in design, and out for selection of consultants. And water resources was selected as the People's Choice for Best Tasting Drinking Water at the annual conference in Savannah, Georgia, where over two thousand two hundred attendants chose Newton County Water Resources Department having the best tasting water.
Let me stop you right there, Mr. Brown. So, for those that don't know, Mr. Brown is Director over our Water Department. That's an abbreviation of his title, but he just read a pretty significant award again this year, and thank you and your department. Please congratulate them on our behalf for the best drinking water, best tasting drinking water in Georgia.
Thank you. Thank you. And that concludes the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions for the county manager report? Yes, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. VC. A question that I have is, as far as our drinking water, I noticed it always has been, at least as long as I've been on the board, best drinking water. So, where are we at for PFAS, Forever Chemicals, or are we getting out of the water, or is there still traces of it in our water?
What we have done since the levels was indicated in the City Pond Reservoir, we have since reduced the operational, the operation of that facility. So, we only operate that facility on a sparing basis. Most of the water, ninety-nine point eight percent of the water, actually comes from the Cornish Creek Facility that's supplied by Lake Varner and the Alcoa River.
I guess this is a question. So, there's no more traces of PFAS in our water?
As of right now, we're doing quarterly testing outside of what the results is. The results, the last results that we did receive is far less than what the MCL that was updated and published by EPA. So, our numbers has less than that amount.
Okay. So, I guess, Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to, if we could, include the, how much PFAS is still in our water, how many, is it out? And so that we can, it's kind of when we start talking about what's going to count as special water, that we can have an update on it until it's out, until the water's completely cleared up.
Okay, so you're asked, if I'm understanding this correctly, the ask is that we, Mr. Brown, get with Mr. Cooper, and you guys give us an update at the next meeting as to what those levels, is there a trend? Where are they trending, that type of information?
Absolutely.
Now, I can give you the amount that's coming out of the reservoir is the indicated amount, but we have not had any detections that's actually in, that's going through the process of the water treatment process. There has not been an indication or a reading that's coming out the effluent side for potable drinking water. There's not been an indication.
Thank you. Any other questions for the filling in county managers tonight? If not, along the lines of unfinished business, we have none. And the consent agenda, if you've all had a chance to look at it, I will entertain a motion to adopt, approve. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's five zero. Thank you. Moving along to item number nine. I believe this is our Finance Director, Ms. Brittany White.
Thank you. So, tonight, we are seeking approval to opt-in to the new Kroger National Opioid Lawsuit. So, this would be the third opioid lawsuit that we would opt-in to. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Sanders.
Just to expound, you said the third lawsuit we're going to be in. So, what is the settlement amount?
We will not know. So, because right now, we're just opting in, so the settlement amount will depend on how many counties and cities opt-in.
And for the current amount that we have now from the first settlement, was that, correct me if I'm wrong, was that six hundred thousand that came in?
We're on target to receive close to seven hundred thousand over the course of, I think it's ten years, but as of this point, we're at about three hundred thousand.
Okay. And just to add, Commissioners, I think I sent you an email from Dr. Roma about the CARES company that wanted to assist with the program for our current opioids. I think I, I don't know if I include you on that, Brittany, as well. But I forward that to you. But thank you so much.
Any other questions? Mr. Henderson.
Thank you. Are there any, any money earmarked for programs, for the monies that we have already received? Or they just, I guess, money that goes into the general fund?
It actually does not go into the general fund. There's a special revenue fund that's set up strictly for the opioid. Myself and the county manager actually had a discussion a couple of weeks ago, so our plan is to put together a committee that's going to probably include multiple public safety arenas, as well as the drug courts, veteran courts, and then we're going to come back to the board with a plan of how to spend the funds.
Anything else? Thank you, Brittany.
We need a vote.
You got the next one, too?
No, but we need a vote on that one.
Oh, we got a vote on that. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five zero. Thank you, Brittany. All right. Item number ten. Who was, let's see, Jeff Prine? Did Jeff leave? Okay, Jeff Prine is the project manager, is the presenter for that particular item. I do not see Jeff. I'll entertain a motion to table first until the next meeting. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and second by Commissioner Sanders and Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five zero to table for two weeks. All right, at this time, we're going to have, I'm going to call for a recess, probably a ten-minute recess. Thank you. Convene earlier than, uh, the fifteen minutes. Uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to hear item ten tonight as opposed to two weeks from tonight. Do I have a second? Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five zero. Alright, Mr. Prime.
So, um, early this, earlier, uh, this summer, uh, we recognized the advice from the county attorney's office that our con- our contract, our own call contract with Matrix Engineering had sunsetted, and we needed to put it back out for competition. So working with the procurement department, Randy, uh, we put together a new RFP for the similar kind of services, which what they do is they provide third-party inspection services, um, material testing and special inspections for our construction projects. They also do geotechnical and other types of advisory to us during the design phase. So they are, this entity is a crucial part of the work that we do in helping us to oversee and make sure that we're getting good quality work. So through the process, we went, we followed the procurement process to put out the RFP. The, uh, proposals came in from seven different firms. A committee was put together, made up of department directors. It was Chester Clegg, Jason Johnson, and Billy Stanley. They evaluated and ranked the different, um, vendors who proposed, and out of that, Matrix Engineering came in as our number one ranked firm, and that's who we're recommending tonight that we enter back into a contract for those services. The pro- their services are funded through each of the capital projects. So each Splot twenty-three or other project that is using their services is built into our budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Prime. Are there any questions for, for Jeff? Commissioner Sanders?
I just wanted to get some clarity. So, as you stated, they'll be used for all the Splot projects. So they won't have to be an RFP for each Splot project, they'll just be the, the main company for all of them?
Exactly. So what we do is we work with them to issue task orders.
Okay.
And a task order could be for the, uh, in the beginning of a project doing geotechnical soil analysis. Um, and then, or it could be during the construction phase doing the testing, material testing and special inspections. We are required by code to have a third-party inspector doing special inspections on our behalf. So we have to have an entity like this working on our projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve Matrix Engineering Group as professional services agreement contract for materials testing and special inspection services for various county projects. I have a motion, I need a second. I'll second. Any, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Alright, we're back in session. I would, at this time, at seven thirty, we were moving to our, the zoning portion of our meeting. At this time, I'll call on Development Services Director, Ms. Sheena Appleweight, to bring us our first case, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good evening, members of the board.
Ms. Appleweight, can I say something before you start? Um, we have quite a few of these tonight, folks. I would, I would appreciate if we move efficiently. I'm gonna try to be as efficient as possible. So if you're gonna speak in favor or against any of these, please, please be ready, alright? Um, we've got, we've got quite a few of these tonight. Thank you so much, Ms. Appleweight.
Okay, our first case this evening, it is part of old business. It is an appe- it is an appeal, it's for the Grand Reserve at Covington, which is a mixed-use development. It's APP twenty-four dash zero 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 two. The name of the appeal applicant is Reed Parker from Thompson-Hutton. The original case number is PP twenty-three dash zero 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 five. And the original applicant is also Reed Parker. The property owner is Shane Douglas Burnett, and the address of the property is on Brunkbridge Road. The tax ID number is zero zero one three one four four. And the proposed use is a mixed-use development, which will have residential and commercial uses. The existing zoning is R two, single-family residential, and this is in the Salem Overlay Tier Three. It is in the Yellow River Watershed, in the established suburban core character area. And they're proposing six point nine eight dwelling units per acre on fifteen point three three acres and a hundred and seven units or lots. And these will be townhomes. And this is in Commission District Two. And again, this, um, again, the appeal, so the, the, they're trying, they're going to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to, which they denied the preliminary plat for PP twenty-three dash zero 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 five for the Grand Reserve at Covington. And the original request was that they were presenting for approval a preliminary plat for the Grand Reserve of Covington Development on Brunkbridge Road on fifteen acres and a hundred and seven lots, which will be townhomes and commercial development. And just a brief history, on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission denied the preliminary plat for the Grand Reserve at Covington. Um, during the public hearing session, there was no one in opposition at the Planning Commission meeting. However, the Planning Commission members expressed concern with the potential additional traffic that the subdivision could bring. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the BOC tabled the petition at staff's request so that applicant could work on the traffic study. And then, of course, the meetings for the BOC for five twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, and for seven two, twenty twenty-four were both canceled. So this is why we're hearing it today. As mentioned before, the character areas are the established suburban core and the live-work corridor. These are included in your packet, so I won't read through, but it does show that an appropriate land use is a mixed use. And of course, the appropriate zonings are the single-family. And same for the live-work corridor character area. So for the preliminary plat analysis, and the Planning Commission, their role is to review for the compliance for sections four-six-zero in Chapter One and sections fourteen, fifteen dash zero three zero in Chapter Two of the Unified Development Ordinance. Um, while staff did not identify substantial potential adverse effects on the surroundings, we do anticipate that there will be an increase in traffic due to the new homes that will be added to this area. However, the staff's recommendations should minimize this. So the mixed-use development was reviewed by the Transportation Department, Fire Marshal, Planning and Zoning and Stormwater Manager for compliance. The Water and Sewer Authority issued approval for the location of the development. And the proposed plat shows a total of fifteen acres, a hundred and seven townhomes. Eighty-four will be rear-loaded and twenty-three front-loaded. And then three point two-two acres would be for the commercial space, which will be right adjacent to Brunkbridge Road. The minimum home sizes they're proposing are seventeen fifty-nine square feet and seventeen thirty-nine square feet. And the subdivision will have a left-turn lane, D cell lane, and two entrances. And of course, they're having amenities, which will be the pool, enhanced common areas, and bike racks and park benches. The development is within proximity of residential and other commercial developments along the Salem and Brunkbridge corridors. And the existing uses in the immediately surrounding area are compatible, and the development remains in line with the comprehensive plan. And again, lies within those two character areas mentioned above. So staff is of the opinion that the proposed preliminary plat, which lies in the Salem Overlay Tier Three meets the requirements for the Unified Development Ordinance. If the plat is approved, it is conceptual in nature until the final plat is approved. Comments from staff, so planning and zoning, we, um, review is done. And again, just the stats, a hundred and seven lots and three point two-two for commercial. It is, um, zone R one, single fam- sorry, R two, single-family and in the Salem Overlay Tier Three. And of course, we have the amenities shown. And the Salem Overlay is what allows for this mixed-use development, even though it's a single-family zoning, because they're in that Tier Three Salem Overlay. That was what allows them to have the townhomes in there with, in conjunction with the commercial use. And again, the Fire Marshal approved the preliminary plat after reviewing, Stormwater Manager as well. The Water Authority, they also issued an approval for the water and sewer capacity. We do have an update from the Transportation Department in reference to the traffic study. Um, so they have stated the, the traffic impact study submitted for the Grand Reserve at Covington is approved. The preliminary plat includes additional turning lanes as recommended by the study. And this is just a brief synopsis, just to give you an idea of, um, additional trips that are anticipated. So for the AM hour, peak hour, you have additional eighty-two total trips. And for the PM peak hour, it's a hundred and thirty-six additional trips. And looking at it for a twenty-four hour period, it would be one thousand five hundred and eighteen new trips anticipated. And again, if this plan is approved, or if this appeal is approved, the plan will be conceptual only and must meet or exceed all the conditions of the Unified Development Ordinance. So we, uh, just briefly to recap the comments from the Planning Commission meeting. Again, they, um, expressed concern for the increase in traffic and density along the Salem Corridor. And they also inquired as to whether community meetings had been held with the residents. At the time, the developer informed me that this had not been done. And, you know, we have the, the townhomes, it's gonna be a hundred and seven townhomes with a commercial component to include restaurants and a convenience store. And they anticipated breaking ground in late twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. And at the PC public hearing, there were no objections. Recommended conditions, the proposed preliminary plat has been reviewed by the Development Services Department and meets the zoning and subdivision requirements pertaining to design and layout. The applicant has completed a traffic study, which has been reviewed and approved by the Transportation Department. The plat has been reviewed for compliance with Chapter One, Division four-six-zero, and Chapter Two, Section fourteen fifteen dash zero three zero of the Unified Development Ordinance. Should the board approve the appeal, it should be with the following recommended conditions. First one would be the development will have two entrances and will include left-turn lanes and D cell lanes as approved by the Transportation Department. The development will be mixed-use with a commercial component adjacent to Brunkbridge Road and a residential component consisting of townhomes. The mixed-use development shall conform to the applicable requirements of the Salem Overlay. Prior to obtaining a land disturbance permit, all comments from the Newton County Fire Marshal, Development Services Department, Transportation Department shall be addressed. And also, prior to obtaining a land disturbance permit, all comments from external agencies, such as the Water Authority, GDOT, Georgia Soil and Water Commission, shall be addressed as applicable. So this is where it is located, just to get you oriented. We have the Salem Road Cor- the Brunkbridge Cor- Corridor here and Salem Road. This is the Walmart here, and they're outlying parcels. And of course, the public is over here, and they're proposing to locate this parcel here adjacent to the Walmart. And of course, it is zoned R two. And we're in the Salem Overlay Tier Three. This is the proposed layout of the plat that they're showing. So we've got the townhomes towards the rear, and these, the parcels in front will be for the commercial development. And this is just a color rendering that they are proposing. These are some of the elevations that they are proposing for rear entry townhomes, which means the garages will be in the rear. And of course, for the front entry, where the garages will be in front. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, the applicant is here.
Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. At this time, we will allow ten minutes for those speaking in favor. For those who want to speak in favor, including the applicant, you're allowed ten minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. My name is Crystal North. Good evening, commissioners. We are here tonight to present our case, the Grand Reserve at Covington, case number APP two-four dash zero 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 two. We initially started this project in December of twenty twenty-two. After months of intricate planning and guidance from county staff, we submitted our preliminary plat. Said plat was received and fully endorsed by county staff with recommendations for approval. When we stood before Planning Commission in January this year, we were denied arbitrarily with traffic concerns. To ease these concerns, we conducted a full traffic study to provide accurate data for the footprint of this development. The data proves that we have correctly addressed these concerns and provide mitigation points with our plat's designs through two entrances, left-turn dedicated lanes, um, D cell lanes, plus we are advancing the county's own efforts in providing the initial piece of the Brown Bridge Road overhaul, which is scheduled per county plans and funding. Another concern from the PC was also a misunderstanding. The day the PC meeting, our engineer had fallen sick and couldn't attend, leaving my husband, Simon North. And although he's an amazing data specialist, uh, previously, uh, for the United States Department for over a decade, he has a UK accent and is not a public speaker, and his point was not quite put across. So let me elaborate. The PC misunderstood when we intend to break ground versus GDOT's delayed work on Salem Road. According to Georgia State Law, Newton County, after LDP is approved, we would have twenty-four months to start work, in which we fully intend to, and/or around the GDOT schedule with the county and Mr. Clegg with their expansion of Brown Bridge Road. All will be delicately aligned with the necessary agencies. We also would like to mention the community outreach that has been conducted on multiple conversations we're had with locals of the area. As you are aware, this is a commercial hub. Our plat sits uniquely in three separate development character areas, as mentioned. Plans that were designed and agreed upon by this very board. Established suburban core, village center, and live-work corridor. Our plat not only sits in line with county's vision through the comprehensive plan, but also abides and fulfills every ordinance in the extensive Salem Overlay District Guidelines, Division four sixty, four sixty dash Salem Road Overlay District. We have addressed many of the neigh- uh, the neighbors' current issues. Our plat provides improvements through our sewage upgrades. This is direct to the neighbors who have not only heard, seen, and love our development, but are improving their lives directly and addressing their septic headaches that they currently are dealing with. As mentioned by our district's commissioner, Mr. Mason, growth follows sewer. Again, I'll reiterate it. Growth follows sewer. So we did just that. We also have spoken to our neighbors on the other side, Walmart, Publix, and twenty-three other commercial establishments, who all would be delighted to see this area as it was intended with the three character areas. We are a minor footprint. The commercial aspect of this neighborhood is being carefully aligned with local needs, medical, dental, small commercial, in line with the area and thoughtfully placed for the community. We have had extensive outreach with local banks and businesses to promote Newton County over nationals. The Chamber of Commerce was also engaged since day one. They received our development with excitement. And Mrs. Debbie Harper even expressed the chamber's interest in having a satellite office specifically at this site. As mentioned, we are intending to place a smaller footprint and provide services needed as we navigate towards LDP approval meeting. We also would like to conduct an open presentation of our final design to the local community. We have tried previously to engage a couple of commissioners in the discussion, however, without much avail, due to nobody responding to our emails. We would love to gladly work with you for future discussion. In conclusion, I would like to reemphasize that this is not a rezoning. The parcel is zoned for this exact development. We are seeking to develop the parcel as intended per your approved guidelines, comprehensive plan, twenty twenty-three, the overlay put in place by Mr. Dobbs himself. We have thoughtfully and carefully conducted, over an extensive period of time, outreach, studies, data, in every effort to consider all involved and provide improvements. All comments were addressed. Water and sewer engineer, Mrs. Alicia Daniels. County transport engineer, Mr. Chester Clegg. Fire marshal, Mr. Brad Strap, Staff. Director of Development herself, Ms. Sheena Appleweight. The Newton County School Board. And we have been following extremely closely for the same period, the county, news, BOC, PC, these meetings, both attending and viewing your recorded livestream and seeing firsthand the outcome, a number of few residents out of the a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred eighty-three residents in Newton County per the U.S. Census Bureau. We can provide the data to provide otherwise and seek to let the masses of Newton County be heard. As stated in the previous meeting, no one was in opposition and no objections were made. This in itself is proof that the residents desire this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone else want to speak in favor of this project? Alright, for those that want to speak in opposition to this project, please state your name and address for the record. You have ten minutes.
Hi, I'm Marie Millian, Neely Manor. Um, I wanted to just say that I oppose this project for now. I'd like for there to actually be a community meeting between District Three and District Two, because it impacts both districts. Even though, um, she stated that she contacted the schools, we are all aware that the schools in Newton County are almost at overcapacity. So we need to take that into consideration. One thing that she didn't mention, that she didn't contact the Sheriff's Department. Yesterday on Amen and Coral, you, you all heard that there was somebody shot and murdered there. So we have to take into consideration crime in the area. And with more people, more crime. So I'd like to just take a step back and go ahead and have a meeting between District Two and District Three, the people that it impacts, and then, um, come back to this. But for now, I'd say, please, go ahead and oppose it. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Uh, I'm sorry, ma'am? I'm sorry, where do you get your name?
Oh, I said Marie Millian. Marie Millian, M.I.L.I.E.N.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak in opposition? You have nine minutes, eight, almost nine seconds.
Good afternoon. My name is Denise Williams. I just want to say that we've been looking to see was Commissioner Mason gonna post anything about a town hall meeting? Because all these projects in District Three, I mean, District Two, they affect District One, Two, and Three. And the traffic is out of control. School is backing, and we can't even move up and down Salem Road. We can't move up and down Brown Bridge Road. And Crowell Road is a nightmare because of, you know, they expanding and working on the road. So I just want to say that it needs to be, I heard her say that she talked to Walmart and Publix and, but no one has talked to the citizens. We, they haven't talked to the residents. So I would like for District One, Two, and Three to host a town hall meeting to- So I would like for District One, Two, and Three to host a town hall meeting to bring the citizens out so y'all can hear our concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else want to speak against this project? You have eight minutes, fifteen seconds, if you wish to speak against. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Tercia Hodge. I am a Newton County resident for over fifteen years. I oppose this project because I'm in District Three. I was, whatever happens in District Two, gonna spill over in District Three. I frequent that area to go to CVS, Walmart, and there's always traffic off of Jack Neely Road. So Salem, Brown Bridge, please, don't, don't approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to this project? State your name and address, please.
Maya Allen, Fairview Estates, District Three. Um, I am too opposed to this project, but I also have a question of clarity, for clarity. Um, she mentioned that Mr. Dobbs put the Salem overlay in place, and I just wanted clarification on who that was specifically.
Well, this is, this, this time is to speak in opposition to the project. I, we could, we could have some discussion after the meeting, I suppose, but this, these, these comments are for speaking opposition.
I am in opposition. Thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Jasmine Hibbert, one one zero Logan's Run. I believe that a town hall meeting does need to be held between Districts One, Two, and Three to discuss the overcrowding issues that we're currently facing, despite the expansion that is planned to, um, be done on Salem Road. I do not think that another development needs to be putting more townhomes in that area as there's numerous projects that are currently ongoing, and the land could be put to better use for community purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address.
There's the candy dish. You didn't have one over there. Dave Norton, four three five seven Highway one forty-two, Newborn. Uh, I'm in District One. I'm completely on the other side of the county. I can see all the way from over there, Newton County is full. We've heard that before. I believe I heard it mentioned that it was a minor footprint, just fifteen acres, a hundred, over a hundred families on fifteen acres. Brownsbridge Road, I know, is already full. It showed seven hundred and something traffic was the first item. It matches the comprehensive plan. Uh, just because it's in the comprehensive plan does not mean that we have to fill every place with the townhomes and apartments like City of Covington seems to want to do. So oppose this, deny this project. Newton County is full. Our schools are full. Our sheriff department is overloaded. Uh, there's just so many reasons that this needs to be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. Uh, does the, those who want to speak in favor wish to rebut? You have five minutes, I bel- close to five minutes, I believe, four fourteen.
Okay. I hear a lot of concerns about traffic. We did a traffic study. The traffic study, I'm sure you guys all have the results. If not, we can provide it to you. There is going to be no impact with, it's actually going to benefit because we're going to put the additional lanes. It's going to help the traffic flow that's currently the issue there now. On top of that, the school, we reached out, and we have the data here to prove that there, again, opinions are just that, opinions. The data doesn't lie. The data shows that there is ample amount of space in the three immediate schools, and I can name them for the record. We've got Newton County Middle, South Salem Elementary, and Liberty Mil- Middle. Newton County currently, they have a total student per classroom at sixteen. The state mandates that there's funding up to twenty-one students. For South Salem Elementary School, they have a student teacher ratio fourteen point six six. They're receiving funding for up to twenty-three students. Liberty Middle School, student teacher ratio eighteen point twelve. They're receiving funding, and they have, they have teachers in place for up to twenty-three students. Again, this is data. This is not an opinion, and we have the records to indicate that. As far as crime, there's crime everywhere. There's crime everywhere. A hundred, you're worried about a hundred and seven townhomes. Please tell me how you feel a hundred and seven townhomes with a hundred and twelve thousand residents over that is going to impact. As far as community is concerned, this was put in place by the people and the board. This wasn't us. Again, it's not a rezoning. We aren't sitting here saying that we want to rezone a parcel. It's in place. The people and the board put this in place. It wasn't us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? I'm sorry, we will not be entertaining anymore in the opposition. Is that correct? Ms. Appleweight? I believe this is District Two.
Two, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Ms. North, for your presentation. Um, and thank you for quoting me. Um, uh, I think one thing that you left out of the quote was infrastructure. Uh, and so even though there may be sewer, uh, there's not the proper infrastructure in place um, for this type of project. And so what I would like to do, um, because we do want to hear from the residents of District Two. Uh, I have received some calls. I have received a communication, uh, and we want to make sure that our community, uh, is happy and satisfied with what is being developed in Newton County. Uh, I think for a long time, uh, there's a possibility that maybe previous boards just allowed certain things to happen, but we can no longer continue to do that or go down that path. And so what I'm requesting, uh, is that this board will table this for sixty days, um, to allow a community meeting so that you all can hear, I can hear collectively, uh, what the residents of District Two are actually saying, and we can figure out how we proceed and move forward. So with that being said, Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to table appeal APP two four dash zero 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 two, uh, for sixty days, uh, to also allow for a community meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion to table for sixty days. Do I have a second? We have a second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Sh- Sheena, based on the traffic study, how many additional trips will come out of that subdivision?
Let's go back to that slide. So this is the summary. So they, they, is it going to be a total of a twenty-four hour period of one thousand five hundred and eighteen?
So fifteen hundred additional trips to Brown Bridge Roads will come out of that subdivision. Um, there was a mention of, uh, commercial business. Has there been a plan of what type of commercial business was proposed to go in that area?
The developer has proposed that they would have, um, restaurants and neighborhood retail.
Did they mention what type of restaurants?
No, they did not. I'm sorry. She was saying medical, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, all right. So there was a mention also, and I don't know if you know this, um, she mentioned high schools. I mean, she mentioned schools, Newton, South Salem, Liberty Middle. She said, was that Newton High?
I believe it says Newton County Middle is what I have written there.
Um, cause I don't know where the numbers that were received in regards to that. I received those numbers as straight from Newton, and Newton High is at capacity. They just had a graduation class of six hundred. They just had a graduation class of six hundred, which subtracted from that, and currently, they have new students that just came in. They were recently over capacity. I got the new numbers. And so with that being said, um, the mention of crime being everywhere. I, I understand crime is everywhere, and we can't combat all of crime. But with us being commissioners in certain areas, that's a statement we definitely don't want to hear because we want to try to combat those crimes and try to take a hold of it and see what we can do to change it. So we know that additional housing and additional people until we get the crime in hand intact is not gonna, is, is gonna hinder it, then that is, that is a huge issue. So I also ask developers all this, I ask them this all the time. That's why I love having town halls with the community, so they can hear from the community. I always ask them this question. Would you like this type of development around your house? Do you live around this many houses? Do you have this type of things around your home? And a lot of them tell me, no. And so I always ask that question. So, and the other question that boggled my mind was when the statement was, our Chamber of Commerce suggested they would have a satellite location at the site. That, that right there sparked the interest for me, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, Shayna, is the intent of the applicant to have these townhomes as rental property, or they're going to be sold? Do we, do we know?
Um, I do not have that information, but I don't know if the vice chair would allow the applicant to answer that? If they're going to be rentals or owner occupied?
We have a motion and a second to table. I don't, I, I, that's as far as we're going to go with comments from the applicants or those in opposition. Sure. Commissioner Sanders?
I just want to put on record that Newton County currently does not have an ordinance. An applicant can come before us and say they are going to have purchased homes, but they can't change their mind and turn them to rentals. We don't have an ordinance in place to stop it.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to table for a period of sixty days. All in favor? All opposed? Passes five zero. Table sixty days. Thank you. Our next, uh, item number two on the rezoning list, Ms. Appleweight.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Our next petition for this evening is a rezoning. It is REZ twenty-four dash zero 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 five. The existing land use map or the flume is commercial. The existing zoning, it is a dual zoned property, office institutional and general commercial. And the proposed zoning for the portion that is office institutional, they're proposing to take that to general commercial, so the entire parcel will have same zoning. And that is about point eight acres or approximately, or just about twenty-five percent of the parcel. They are in the live-work corridor, corridor area, Yellow River Watershed. Location is fifteen seventy-five access road. And the total parcel size is two point eight three acres, and again, point eight of this approximately is what they are seeking to rezone to general commercial. The tax ID is zero zero four three, zero zero four C. This is in District Commission Four. The current owner is A- A- H Grant Rice, or the Herschel Grantland Rice Estate. The petitioner is J.T. Costin, and the representative is John Michael Bush. An applicant's intent is to rezone zero point eight acres approximately to general commercial, so as to make the zoning consistent and to have one continuous use of the property. And just a little bit of history, on the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning of approximately point eight acres to general commercial. On July second, the BOC meeting was canceled, so it was not heard theirs, and so it's going to be heard tonight. In a conclusion to the findings, provided staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site. The proposed rezoning to general commercial for the remainder of the parcel is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and with approved zonings in the area. It will create a continuous zoning for the entire parcel and hence increase the usability of the land. The parcel is developed with a utility trailer business currently licensed there, given the designation of the flume as commercial. Staff is of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate since it will be consistent with adjacent properties and uses. So should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for general commercial. Conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions, where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And the recommended conditions we have are one, to the owner's agreement to the following, A, prior to any new uses, all permits shall be obtained as applicable, and B, they must obtain and maintain a business license as applicable. This is the location of the parcel along the access road, which runs parallel to I twenty. And you can see the zoning, so it's mostly general commercial and the surrounding parcels, just, and this portion of the bottom here is office institutional, and that's the part they're seeking to rezone. And this is just a close-up of what it looks like. The flume is commercial, same as the surrounding. This purple here is industrial. And of course, it's in the Yellow River Watershed, Commissioner District Four. And this shows a corridor area. It's in the live-work corridor. This is a survey now submitted of the parcel, as you have an aerial of what it looks like. And, um, if there are no more questions for staff, the applicant will do the rest of the presentation.
All right, this, any questions for staff before we go into the hearing? All right, this time we'll enter into the hearing. Uh, those who want to speak in favor will have ten minutes, including the applicant. You have ten minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. John Michael Bush, twenty-one hundred Powers Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant and the prospective purchaser of this property, which is Hickory Real Estate Partners. During our initial due diligence of this property, we noticed that a portion appeared to be zoned office institutional, as Ms. Appleweight noted, and we confirmed the same with staff. The split zoning, we're, we're not quite sure the, the origination of it, but, uh, it appears to be in line with some of the Newton County lot, landlot lines, uh, almost one for one. And which, which predate some of the subdivisions and development on the south side of twenty here. Uh, this particular property was developed in the mid to late nineteen nineties, and it's been, I'll flip to a three D aerial. It's been continuously used as, as it is today for the last twenty-five or so years. Um, and as you can see on this three D rendering, it's highly complimentary with everything, excuse me, within this heavy commercial and light industrial corridor, both on the north side of I twenty and then on the south side of I twenty. Some of the uses that surround this include truck parking, equipment sales and rental, a handful of building materials, and other similar heavy commercial, light industrial applications. As the property is currently zoned with this small office institutional configuration, there's really no economic use case for that portion of the property, and that's why we're here this evening, just to clean up what appears to be a relic in the zoning map, uh, to allow for one continuous commercial general zoning across this entire parcel. We appreciate, uh, and are, welcome any questions, uh, from you all, and, uh, we're excited to make a, a pretty substantial investment here in this property into the county, um, and appreciate Development Services, uh, time and, uh, accommodating our, our acquisition timeline here, so. So, with that, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this item number two? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition? You have ten minutes to do so. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? Ms. Appleweight? And I believe this is District Four, Commissioner Henderson. Any mo, any motion, anyone wish to make a motion?
Um, thank you, Mr., uh, Mr. Vice Chair. I am, I am somewhat familiar with this property, and I had always thought that it was just total commercial. With all those trucks and on the, and the big tractor truck. And they were doing some, teaching people how to drive, they had changed from one, I guess, one thing to another. But just to make a long story short, I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I have a motion, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Appleweight, item number three on the, in the zoning section of portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, our next item this evening is amendment to the ordinance, um, to the Unified Development Ordinance. Um, it is U D O A M D twenty-four dash zero zero one. And it will end up being resolution zero dash zero eight zero six twenty-four. And again, this is to amend the chapter one zoning ordinance, Article Five, Division Five One Zero, which is temporary buildings and amending any conflicting language within. So, this, this, the temporary building permit, it refers to, um, temporary buildings that, you know, can be located on properties, it could be in conjunction with a primary building permit, where a homeowner can request to stay in an RV as long as they have an active primary building permit and that they're actively building. We also have temporary buildings, um, on construction sites. Uh, we know where they're used as construction trailers or construction offices. And so, there's several different types, and there are other different types of temporary buildings that we, um, do accommodate for. So, this one, this here is to amend Division Five Ten, the U standards, and it is section five ten dash six four zero, which deals completely with the temporary buildings. Now, the font in red are the changes that staff work with legal to propose. When we took it to the Planning Commission, they had further recommendations, and this would be the font in blue. And then the fonts in black are the original item, and the original text that was there. So, what we're proposing is that the temporary buildings as defined in section one oh five dash zero two zero may be approved administratively by the zoning administrator, except where otherwise specifically permitted. Temporary buildings shall not be allowed in any district except when used in conjunction with construction work or pending completion of a permanent building for a period not to exceed. Um, staff's recommendation was nine months, the Planning Commission asked about six months. The reason staff has recommended nine months because it takes, um, an individual homeowner on average nine to twelve months to complete their home. And other developers take a shorter period of time, but when it's an individual homeowner, it takes a little longer. So, um, a measurable goal would be, uh, the nine months. So, the time period may be extended by an administrative use permit granted by the Planning Commission. So, what this means is that if they get to that nine month period and they still have not completed a home, in order to keep the RV there to stay in while they're, while they build, they would have to go before the Planning Commission to request permission to extend that permit. Currently, it's done administratively in-house, but we're proposing to take that to the Planning Commission, um, so that citizens have an opportunity to weigh in. So, prior to the issuance of any such administrative use permit, the applicant must establish, one, and these are, um, further conditions that the Planning Commission had recommended, that sufficient construction of the permanent building has occurred during the initial nine or six month period, depending on what we decide tonight. Six month term to justify such extensions, and two, that the construction of the permanent building will continue uninterrupted until completion. Three, that the extension will not otherwise harm the health, safety or welfare of surrounding property owners. And four, that the extension requested is for the least amount of time as is reasonably necessary for the completion of the permanent construction. So, again, everything in red and blue would be changes that we are proposing for this section of the ordinance. So, A, temporary buildings used at development construction sites shall require a building permit only, a moving permit is not applicable. B, no temporary building authorized hereon there may be used for residential purposes on any lot or parcel smaller than two acres or on any lot or parcel located within a residential subdivision. And then, no temporary building located on any lot or parcel smaller than two acres or on any lot or parcel located within a residential subdivision shall contain, one, any facilities or equipment used for laundering, washing or drying clothing or other fabrics. Or two, any facilities or equipment used for storing, preparing or cooking food. So, we are looking at not having them in residential subdivisions. And then, for those parcels that are not located in a subdivision, so if you have what we call miscellaneous parcels or for homeowners, you know, who have their own land outside of a subdivision, if you, you have to be two acres or more to qualify to have a temporary RV while you build your home. An alternative that the Planning Commission was looking at, um, for this same section, they're saying that no temporary building may be used for residential purposes, um, in and, you know, to name a specific zoning district. And then, no temporary building located within said zone of the district shall contain, one, the same as above, facilities or equipment used for laundering, washing or drying clothing. Or two, any facilities or equipment used for storing, preparing or cooking food. Staff would recommend going with the one above. If you're, if you're building a resident, if you're doing a primary residence, you know, currently, any residential zoning could qualify for that. So, targeting one zoning over another could present some challenges. So, we, I think it's better to restrict the acreage down to two acres. And then, of course, within residential subdivisions, we won't allow the RVs to be used as a temporary building. Part C, temporary buildings shall be located at least fifty feet from any residence or street right-of-way line. And part D, which is a new section that was added, any portable or temporary toilet facility used in connection with a temporary building or kept on the same lot or parcel as a temporary building shall be kept and maintained in a clean and sanitary condition, emptied and serviced no less than weekly, and placed in a location that is not visible from any adjacent residence or street right-of-way line. No temporary toilet facility may be placed except, although be placed, kept or maintained within fifty feet of any creek, stream, river, lake, pond, residence or street right-of-way line. In order to evidence compliance herewith, the owner on the property on which the temporary building is located shall provide to the zoning administrator written evidence in the form of a contract or with receipts from a properly licensed waste disposal contractor, demonstrating a schedule acceptable to the zoning administrator for cleaning, emptying and servicing the portable or temporary toilet, and such other evidence of the proper cleaning, emptying and servicing of the portable or temporary toilet as may be required from time to time by the zoning administrator. So, essentially, what we are asking is that you provide us with what your plan is to ha, ensure that it's empty, your tanks are emptied regularly. We do require, you know, um, you to provide us with either a contract or some kind of receipt that you've made with a company that is licensed to do such disposal. And E, temporary buildings shall be removed when the construction has been completed. And that brings us to the end of this, um, section ordinance that we are attempting to amend. And, uh, staff is Development Services, we are the applicant, so if there are any questions?
Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I have a question, what is the amount of extensions that one applicant can have? I didn't see that listed, or is there, and maybe our county attorney can better assist me, is there a law? Or did I miss it, I'm sorry if I missed that part?
So, in the first part, what we're saying, so, um, once you're grant, you, you may be granted, uh, well, you, so when you come for your primary permit, you can apply for a temporary permit. And that will go up to nine months is what staff is recommending. If you haven't completed building and you need to extend it, you have to go before the Planning Commission for them to make that determination. Currently, it's done administratively, but we're changing that process for it to be done before the Planning Commission. Then they will make a determination, uh, depending on the progress in the building, um, how much time they think is left. So, um, to determine how many, what kind of extension, you know, they can grant at that time.
And to, to add to that, the extension is for the least amount of time it will take to complete the structure.
Okay.
So, if, 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 if it can, if the building can be completed within three months, that's the maximum extension.
And you stated in regards to the health, welfare and surrounding of the property owner. So, my question is gonna be, is there gonna be a set code enforcement person to that area that's gonna check periodically, how many times would they check? So, how will we have any checks and balances if that is in compliance?
Um, we are complaint driven, and this is how we are aware of most of our cases, if the code officers don't observe it, you know, while they're out in the field. So, if we receive a code complaint, we address it at that time.
Okay. And you mentioned that you would rather have the, I think it was the second one, here we go. In regards to the cooking, cleaning, you would rather the first part.
Yeah.
And I think the residents were putting that part in to make sure that no one was actually doing those things on the property. So, would it, and legal can also ask, extend, ask that, answer the question as well, would that be an issue just keeping it there? What would be the difference if you actually have both of them, well, no, you need the second, you just have the second part?
It's one or the other, they both say the same thing, um, it's, it'll be difficult to enforce the second one, I mean, which residential zoning will you choose?
The, the difference between those two sections is not the kitchen and laundry facilities.
Okay.
The difference in those two sections is where are temporary buildings limited? The one we are recommending is that there are no residential temporary buildings on any lot less than two acres or any lot within a residential subdivision regardless of the zoning.
Okay.
What the Planning Commission, and they also recommended the kitchen and laundry facilities, we've incorporated that in the first paragraph.
Yeah, okay.
But what they, what the comment made by the Planning Commission was, should we make it specific to zoning districts? And we recommend against that because you have so many different zoning districts, we would have to go through and list all of them. We think it's an easier enforcement mechanism just to say, doesn't matter how you're zoned, if it's less than two acres or if it's in a subdivision, you can't live in the temporary building.
Now, I would love to hear from my colleagues that are in one and five, because I know y'all have larger lots. So, how, what is your feelings on, because two acres would be normal for the west side, but what about the east side?
Well, I could tell you, I, I see this qu- quite a bit in, in, in my district, or in District One. So, uh, I, I think this cleans up and certainly addresses the constituents of several months ago, um, uh, for, for larger lots, and it, and, and it, it permanently, permanently deletes it from anything in a subdivision, so. Uh, and I think that's appropriate. But, um, a- at least two acres, uh, it definitely cleans it up for me, I don't, Commissioner Cowan? Thank you, any, any other comments? All right, this time we'll enter into a public hearing. Those who want to speak in favor, you have ten minutes to do so. Those who want to speak in favor, you have ten minutes to do so, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lisa Alexander, I live in Oxford, uh, the same community as ninety-six Westlake Drive, which is the property that this amended ordinance addresses. Um, we are now entering year three of having to drive by this property on a daily basis and looking at a camper and a porta potty that is right on the road, it is not fifty feet away from a road. Um, and year three, and we are tired of this. So, my first implore, imploring remark to you is that you approve the six months rather than the nine months. Because if you can't complete a construction on your house in three years, there's a problem. You shouldn't have ever started it. Um, so this has been a blight on our community for three years now. Um, currently, the property owner at this address is in an appeal process. He is asking for an extension to extend his permits to live basically a campsite in our community. So, again, um, we're asking that you approve this amendment. And I do have a question. For instance, if his approval, if his approval, his appeal gets approved for an extension, is this property owner going to be grandfathered in under the rules of the old ordinance? Or if you people approve the new ordinance tonight, will he have to abide by the rules of this new ordinance if his extension were to be approved?
Ma'am, we can answer those questions, this is a public hearing for you to speak in favor of, uh, this, this ordinance. Uh, we, that's something we can take up after the meeting if you'd like.
I am in favor of this ordinance, and I ask that you approve it for the six month time period, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this ordinance? State your name and address for the record, you have eight minutes, seven seconds.
Dave Norton of Newborn. It says within a residential subdivision, uh, so if it's a lot that is two acres or less, but it's not in a subdivision, can it be, can someone put an RV in while they build their home? I know you can't answer the questions. Uh, just want y'all to look at the wording here and make sure that it's correct. That was my only question, I'm, appears that I will be in favor of this. Just want to make sure the wording is correct, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Please state your name and address.
My name is Rebecca Mask, and I live at six nine five Stone Lee Drive in Oxford, Georgia. We started this process, like Lisa said, about three years ago, seeing the trailer and, and that going on, and it, it started like it was building, and we were all happy. Well, it just stopped again. And so, now, since we saw the sign up for the extension, we know that he's gone back and got extensions and extensions, that people can do that, okay? And since he's applied for this new one, now he's gone out and started building, put some concrete down. Now, back in, let's see, it was in May, he got up here uh, and spoke to y'all during that time. And, um, as my understanding, he wasn't even supposed to be able to get up here, because he was running for the, uh, seat, uh, chairman's seat. But anyway, he got up and spoke and told us at that time that he'd have that thing built by, end of May. He'd have the walls up and everything and it'd be built. Nothing has been done on it, other than the last week, that he's poured some concrete because he's run off up here and applied for an extension, and we're afraid it's just gonna go on and on and on. His happens to be two point five acres. And he's right before you go into the subdivision. So, see, we're caught in that, that it's, he, he's gonna go over the amount of acreage he's got there. And maybe he's gonna fall in that little spot in there. I don't want that to be a loophole. This county has grown, I'm from here, I'm seventy-one years old, lived here all my life. And I have never seen the bursting of a county like this one has gone, I've never seen so many apartments, townhouses. The growth, we don't have the road structure, we just, I mean, I know we're working on it, but, uh, y'all are working on all of this. But right now, we're, we're with all this. but right now, we're, we're with all this going on, and this is going to happen more and more and more.
Ma'am, are you speaking in favor of this ordinance?
I am in favor, absolutely, of this ordinance. I'm just saying that there may be some trimming down somewhere, or something put in there, so that we don't keep these things going on. Oh, yeah, I'm absolutely in favor of it, because these are going to pop up everywhere. And I met probably every one of you can think of, yeah, I've ridden by that place several times, and they don't do anything on it. They're building it, but it, it just, it never goes anywhere, and it goes on for a year or two, and you look at this for a year or two. I am, again, tired of looking at a porta potty as I ride by every day, just thinking who's going in and going out, and what they've been doing. And it just irritates the heck out of me, and I just want to say, I'm definitely for this ordinance. It's time to get it passed, time to get it done, to get it done for the whole county, countywide. And I thank y'all very much for all the hard work y'all put in here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? That portion of our hearing is closed, is, would anyone like to speak against this, uh, this, against this ordinance? Anyone want to speak against this ordinance, in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. Ms. Applewhite? Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve U D O M A eight, I'm sorry, let me start over. U D O A M D two-four dash zero zero one, O dash zero eight six oh six two four.
Mr. Vice Chair, if a motion is made, we need to answer two questions. First of all, we need to decide whether the permits will be for six months, or for nine months, or whatever other time this board decides upon. And secondly, whether or not you will accept the language, the two-acre language, or the zoning district-specific language, and again, we recommend the two-acre language. So, we need to make sure the motion includes those two.
So, the motion needs to include the, the verbiage just used by the county attorney. Good luck with that.
Mr. Vice Chair, can I ask a question? There was a question asked about two acres outside of residential. So, how would that also be affect, and we know we don't want any residential, but two acres outside of residential?
So, the ordinance is drafted to prohibit the temporary building used for residential purposes, either in a subdivision lot, or on any lot smaller than two acres, regardless of whether it's in a subdivision.
On any lot, okay.
Now, if you don't think two acres is sufficient, you can make a motion for whatever acreage you wish, but it, it would prohibit it within or without a subdivision.
Oh, gosh, okay. All right, so, I make a motion to approve the ordinance number, make sure I get this number in here. Sorry about that. U D O A M D two-four dash zero zero one, for six months renewal, and then also for in residential area, for the two acres, in any residential area.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? Mr. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, and Mr. Patrick, would this address, I mean, I won't say a problem, but the discussion that we've had for over a year and a half, two years, is, is per our residents of Newham County, who have came within and asked that we do something. Would this address it, this question I'm raising?
A couple of things. First of all, we do not adopt ordinances for a specific person. You adopt ordinances as an exercise of your police power. I would urge you not to make this ordinance contingent on whether or not it will apply specifically to any one individual. That's, that's not, Constitution doesn't let us adopt a law to a specific person. Um, I'm going to have to defer to Sheena to tell us whether this ordinance would prohibit a new application. I don't know if, I don't know the details of the, of that specific property, but if that property is on a lot smaller than two acres, or in a residential subdivision, this ordinance would prohibit it going forward. Because there is a pending appeal, I am hesitant to have you discuss the outcome of that appeal outside of the appeal process. I'm happy to discuss it with you all individually, but the, the property owner in this case is entitled to his appeal rights. He is entitled to be heard just as he says.
Absolutely. There's, there was a reason why I asked for your expertise, as being the, uh, our counsel, as our attorney, and for our constituents, you know, we are elected people. And people come and ask us questions, and ask us, I know me personally, to do certain, look at certain things, certain projects, certain stuff, and it's our job to look at it and come, go to counsel, the county attorney, and that's the question. That's all.
Yes, sir, and what, what I'm suggesting is, is my recommendation to you is let me discuss that matter with the board in a private setting rather than a public setting, because the property owner has rights as well, and I don't want us to violate those rights.
This amendment is particularly for temporary buildings, it doesn't affect a primary building permit, which I believe is what Commissioner Henderson was asking about. So, if you wanted to apply for a permit to build your home, this ordinance is not addressing that. This is addressing if you wanted to have an RV on the home while you're building. So, this is just for the temporary building permit portion.
Any more questions? All in favor? All opposed? That passes five-zero. Ms. Applewhite, we'll move on to new business, which is zoning as well, and that's item number three, O T C two-four dash zero 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 one.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is a overlay tier change, that's what O T C stands for, and we don't get too many of these. But the case number is O T C twenty-four dash zero 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 one, it's located at Salem Road and four-zero-three-one Salem Road. So, these are two parcels owned by the same individuals, so we've addressed them in the same petition. The existing flume, or land use map, is a development node, the existing zoning is general commercial. The current overlay tier is a Salem overlay tier one, which is a residential tier, and they are requesting to go to the Salem overlay tier three, which is the Salem Town Center. The parcel sizes are one point two-one acres and zero point eight-six acres respectively. The tax ID numbers are thirteen dash five-five and thirteen dash five-five A. It is located in the South River Watershed and in Commission District Two. Current owner is listed as a Torrell Legacy LLC, and the petitioner is John Nix, and I believe Mr. Mark Walton is standing in for him today. An applicant's intent is to change a tier for both properties to the Salem overlay tier three, to allow for appropriate commercial uses. And just a brief history, on seven-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, the planning commission recommended denial by a vote of two to three. And the planning commission, they expressed concerns of the types of commercial uses, you know, that could go there. And staff has addressed this in the recommendation section. The character area is the live-work corridor, and I won't read through all of this, but commercial uses are allowed, which is why the property is currently zoned. So, just to give an example of the situation with the properties, so currently, this is what a Salem, this is just a sample of what a Salem overlay chart looks like. The prop, the sort of tier that they're in, the first red box, they are in this, they're in tier one, and it only addresses if you've got a current residential zoning, which they do not, they have a current commercial zoning. So, they can't do any of these uses in this column. When we go across to where their zoning is listed as general commercial, tier one is not listed, it's just tier two and three. So, they can't use any of these either. So, they're kind of severely restricted, and they're trying to bring it, bring the parcels, you know, into compliance. So, the conclusion is the two parcels, they've been zoned commercial at least since the nineteen-seventies. In twenty-twenty-three, the Salem overlay was incorporated into the zoning ordinance, and a residential tier was assigned to the, those two properties. As a result, the existing uses on the properties at the time became legally non-conforming. So, there was a daycare recently on one property, and a wicker shop on the other. Um, in twenty-twenty-three, G dot purchased sections of both of the parcels, so they didn't purchase the entire parcels, as part of their Salem Road widening project, and as a result, the daycare building was demolished, and the wicker shop is closed. So, due to the time that has elapsed, the properties have lost that legal non-conforming status, and they now have to come into compliance with the current ordinance. However, since the Salem overlay tier one is residential, it's not compatible with the commercial zoning, and hence it severely restricts the use of the property. Changing the tier to the Salem overlay tier three will make the zoning compatible with overlay, and hence bring the property into compliance with current ordinances and uses. So, should the B O C approve the tier change request, staff will recommend including the following updated conditions, which address the concerns that were raised by the planning commission. So, for recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for an overlay tier change to the Salem overlay tier three, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. Now, initially, we had just for them to come into compliance with Division four-six of the Salem overlay, according to the zoning ordinance, but we have added the following uses, which shall not be permitted on the property. So, these were include convenience stores with or without gasoline pumps, these are just gas stations and a convenience store, um, gas stations, vape shops, adult novelty stores, pawn shops, massage parlors, tattoo parlors, automobile sales and service, automobile repair, oil change emission facilities, and the car washes. And of course, we kept the second recommendation, which was compliance with Division four-six-zero, which is the Salem overlay section. These are the two parcels, um, so this is Salem Road, currently, this is Salem Circle. So, this building is no longer here. As you can see, G dot, you know, they, they have the, what they're proposing, it went right through this property. So, that building was demolished, and then this is the wicker shop on this one here, which is no longer there. So, there is no current uses on any of these, either of these properties. Current zoning, the entire block, they're zone general commercial. This is the part, this is the, this is why we're here today, for the Salem overlay tier change. So, over here, we have the Town Center, it would be contiguous if they were to, what they're requesting is to go to this tier three over, on this side here, so that these two parcels can come into compliance with what the ordinance is requiring. The flume is a development node, which supports the current zoning of general commercial, it is in District Two. This is just a picture of what the wicker store, the shop that is there, it is a historic building, so the building will not be torn down, but it is also a commercial use, which they currently can't use, um, you know, because of, it's not in compliance anymore. And this is an old picture from Google. This is the lot next door where the daycare used to be, so that was demolished, so it's currently set as an open parcel. And the applicant is here tonight, if there are no questions for staff? If no questions, then it is a public hearing. No, okay.
Any questions for Ms. Applewhite? I, I think I have one. So, we're, we're looking at a scenario here where the zoning and the, the overlay conflict. Right? And we're just trying to get it consist, consistent, all the piece, all the parcels to one, into the over, the overlay zoning, or the overlay conditions, correct?
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, the, yeah, the tier is a residential tier, but they're zone commercial, so they don't go, so they can't do any uses there if they were to come in to apply, you know, for a business license, we couldn't grant it because of that, that residential tier below.
Okay, so, for the sake of time, I'm not, I know we can't combine all three, but, but, but all three of these are in the same vein. Uh, we're trying to make, bring consistency to the, these three parcels, so, just so the, the public is aware, that's what we're trying to accomplish here, correct?
Yeah, so there'll be these, yeah, one, two, three, four parcels. Yes, there's, this, this, this current petition we're doing includes two parcels, because of the same owner, so we put them under the one petition. Yeah, so the two, where the two stars are, those were two separate parcels, and G dot has, they have intentions of putting the road right through in the middle there, so it took out a piece of each of the parcels.
Any question? Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
So, can you tell me why the planning commission denied it? What was their reasoning again?
They had concerns of, um, commercial uses that would go there, um, but they know the parcels, they've been commercial since the seventies. So, to address some of their concerns, we recommended a few, um, commercial uses that should be prohibited, which would be the list that I read off.
Did the applicant mention what they plan on putting there?
None at this time, but they are here to the, yes.
Any other questions before we go to our zoning? This time, we will, uh, open our zoning for, for item number three, O T C two-four dash zero 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 one, overlay tier change. The, I'll open it up now, for those who want to speak in favor, you have ten minutes, including the applicant, you have ten minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, uh, Mark Walton with Patrick and Associates, nine-twenty-eight Black Lawn Road, Conyers. Um, I'm here pinch hitting for Mr. Nix, who could not be here this evening. Um, this particular, um, request that we're making is basically, this was sort of brought on by the D O T. Um, the property had a daycare, the southernmost property had a daycare on it that was operating. Uh, D O T has found it necessary to reroute Salem Road, um, and that resulted in the demolition of the daycare. The wicker building that's to the north of that, owned by the same property, um, it is now vacant, um, and it has been vacant for such a period that they cannot reapply for, uh, a business license. Uh, hopefully, other side button, ah, okay. Um, up on the screen there, um, these are the two parcels that we're talking about. The daycare building used to sit right there, um, and then the little wicker building is right there, which is in, uh, a historic, the D O T has marked that as a historic building. So, the back parcel, which is one point two acres, and the front parcel, which is point eight-six acres. Um, the back parcel, hopefully I have that next, uh, the orientation's a little bit different. This is going due north up Salem Road, this is where relocated Salem Road is going. This is the back parcel, which is the one point two-one acres total. Um, because of the requirements of the overlay, we would have approximately one acre that's in a buffer. Uh, in the future, we could come back and request a reduction, uh, but that would have to go to a public hearing. So, currently, there will be about two-tenths of an acre that's developable. Then up to the north is the wicker shop. Trying to think, this has been general commercial, used that way for fifty years. Uh, in twenty-thirteen, when the overlay, uh, Salem Road overlay came into effect, it sort of messed everything up with the residential tiering. So, we're asking to be brought, brought into the tier three, and I'm here to answer any questions, or reserve time for future rebuttal.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? You have seven minutes, excuse me, seven minutes, twenty-seven seconds, if you'd like to speak in favor. That portion of our hearing is closed, we'll now hear, now those in opposition have ten minutes to speak. Ten minutes to speak in opposition. State your name and address for the record, please.
Dave Norton of Newborn. I'm curious as to what the, uh, property across Salem Road from this is. Is it residential? I think there's I think there's a mobile home park across from there, if I'm not mistaken. And is also the property that was purchased by DOT, I'm understanding, I believe I heard at the planning commission meeting, that that was purchased by GDOT over 10 years ago? And is there any plans heard from, on GDOT to go forward with any of their construction work on this road? And I would be curious what any of the residents in the area, what they think of more commercial coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to this rezoning, this overlay change request? You have nine minutes, seven seconds, if you'd like to speak in opposition.
Maya Allen, Fairview, District Three. I was at the planning committee, and if my memory serves me correct, all three of these motions were denied based on the traffic that currently exists on Salem Road and the inability of them to tell us what type of commercial businesses they intended to put there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. Ms. Appleweight, I believe this is District Number Two, Mr. Mason. Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry, rebut, I'm, thank you.
Thank you again, Mark Walton. If I can go back a few slides to the, to Ms. Appleweight's. Across the street, there is the trailer park. That was one of the questions that Mr. Norton had asked. And as far as the traffic, the improvements being made to Salem Road are there to handle the traffic. And probably anything that could go on these parcels would not be an increase from what was previously on there before the daycare was taken down and a big swath was cut out of the properties. And also DOT took the daycare land two years ago. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you. That portion of our meeting is closed. Ms. Appleweight, and now Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it is very, very important for this particular area to ensure that it is compliant. And I believe that's what these are doing, is making sure that this particular area is in compliance with the Salem overlay. To my understanding, when the Salem overlay was put in place, what it did, it had actually put in certain things that is required when it comes to how things are developed in that particular area from a commercial perspective. When you come along the Salem overlay corridor, even when you look at the future land use map, the majority of all of that area is going to be commercial use. And so we want to make sure that if there is any type of commercial use that is within this area, that it does follow that Salem overlay, because those overlays are very important. And so I believe previous boards put those in place for specific reasons. We don't want any type of commercial development to just look any old kind of way. This kind of helps provide structure and guidance in regards to what that commercial use will look like. I know from previous conversations that we had when it come from commercial development, I know our residents have had some specific concerns. And so I was happy to see that there were some additional uses that this will not be permitted, which are convenience stores. I know that has been a big thing for the residents in this area because we have enough convenience stores and gas stations in that area. So I was glad to see that that was now included, that whatever commercial project comes here, it won't be a convenience store with or without gasoline pumps. It won't be a gas station. It won't be a vape store. It won't be an adult novelty store, a pawn shop, massage parlor, tattoo parlor, automobile sales and service, and automobile repair, oil change, emissions facilities, and car washes. And so I think this does help address the concerns. I know from what I've heard from residents in this particular area, but we want to make sure that we are compliant with this particular area. Even the wicker store that's still there, it's going to be there because it's an historical building, and so we can't even tear that down. So we want to make sure that whatever is there, it looks and meets the Salem overlay standards that are in place. And so with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve OTC two four dash zero 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 one.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. We have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Just have a few questions. With the property is located, isn't that close to the church Salem, the Salem Bible?
The Salem Cambrum? There, this parcel way up here.
Salem, Salem Bible Church or something?
The Salem Cambrum is up here.
I might add that cemetery for that church is across the road right there.
And then also, there is a house directly across from where he showed, they showed the white building that was the, the one that was going to be a historic site. There's actual residential directly across from that.
This.
There's actual house. Because that's where one of the voting precincts was.
Yeah, so this is, yeah. This is a single family residence here and here, and then this is mobile home park. Or trailer park, yeah.
Any other question? Yep, Commissioner Mason.
So let me add to that. So when you go and look at the actual way, the structure, the way that the, the Georgia Department of Transportation is actually going to be restructuring Salem Road, which is going to start in the fall of 2024, you will actually see from what it is, it's going to be four lanes. And so if there's any issue with, and I don't even know if this particular, because from what I've seen, this, actually this particular visual isn't accurate. From what I've been shown is that when it gets down to where the church, where the cemetery is, it actually stops, Salem Road will stop there and go behind those particular, the church is still there. It will go behind the church. It will go behind the cemetery because you cannot actually tear those down. So it will actually go behind those structures, which will be away from the campground. It will be away from the church. It will be away from the mobile home. And so you are actually taking traffic away from those current things that are still standing there, which the, which is the diagram on way Georgia Department of Transportation has it. And so I wanted to be sure that we understand that there will not be any roads that will actually impede on any of those particular things that are still there.
You are correct, Commissioner. So this is the current Salem Road here. So the, the campground is on this side here, the trailer park is here. The GDOT is going behind here. This is the proposed GDOT road. And it goes behind the cemetery, like you said. This is a cemetery somewhere here. Because so that this is the current Salem Road is my understanding. And this actually shows the new Salem going behind. So it goes through these two properties. These are the two properties we're looking at today. It dissects those two, and it goes behind the wicker store, behind the cemetery. And I think this is like spring.
It is, that spring road. So I see it now where the old was down at the bottom. And how the new, where it actually stops at the campground, and it actually goes behind it.
Yes, sir. So you are correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
The reason why I was asking those questions, I know there's two churches there, one across from each other. Salem, the campground, where there's a church next door, and there's a church across the street. And so my question was, the reason why I asked those questions was because not knowing, even though we know certain things can't be placed there based on the businesses that were listed that the commissioner actually mentioned, not knowing what's going to be there, I would love to know what's going to be there because you have those Christian-based businesses there, well, nonprofits that are there, as well as you have residential there that probably have no ideas. I don't know what's going to be there, which is making it a question mark for me, not knowing what type of business. I wish, how can we put in place, Patrick, that might be a question for you, to where when applicants do apply to something of this magnitude, that they tell us exactly what they're going to be building?
So usually when they bring a project into our department, this is part of the pre-application meeting. The addition protection, the additional protection that these lots will have is that they're in the Salem overlay. And those, their uses in the Salem overlay are restricted. The uses in the Salem overlay, the uses that are allowed countywide, not all of them are allowed in the Salem overlay. So that already cuts down some of the uses in there. But when they do their pre-application meeting with us, they do have to, you know, disclose that information at that time, tell us what the project is about, and we make a determination if it's appropriate or in line with the ordinance and the Salem overlay at that time.
So are you able to tell us what the project is about? Because I was listening to one of the residents that said they didn't mention that to the planning commission, which is why they denied it.
No, I was just answering a question in general. We don't know what the uses they're doing here today. But they're going to be limited to only what the Salem overlay allows.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If, how was brought to my attention when it came to the planning commission, to my understanding, this motion wasn't made by the District Two Planning Commission representative. This was actually made a motion made by the District Three Planning Commission. And so I think maybe there just wasn't some understanding in regards to what this was really doing and how it was actually making it where it is now in compliance with that Salem overlay. Because those Salem overlays are very important, and they have those restrictions. And so we want to make sure that anything that is developed in these particular areas, that it has those Salem overlay restrictions. They were put in place for a reason to have those restrictions. And so to my understanding, I think there just wasn't a great understanding of what these particular items were doing when it comes to compliance. And, and correct me if I'm incorrect, even if we don't know what project it is currently, when there is someone that wants to establish a project, that does have to come back before the planning commission with all of the, the schematics and the drawings and all of those details, they have to be approved by the planning commission. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It depends on the project. All preliminary plots, of course, come before the planning commission. But if they're using just a straight commercial use, it depends on if administrative use permit is required or if a conditional use permit is required. So the Salem overlay use table will dictate that, just depending on what use they're looking to put there.
So we basically have measures in place to ensure that it's not something that's going to be counterproductive for the community.
The only things that can't go there, correct me if I'm wrong, is that what are the, are the things we read off?
Yes, sir. The prohibited list, yes.
Commissioner Sanders, and then we're going to vote.
Yes, sir. This is my, our last comment, and it's not, not going towards Commissioner Mason. I just know from knowing, being there, the District Two Commissioner was not present. So that was, that's what happened, why it was not made. But we all live in that Salem corridor, so we're very much familiar with the area. So that's, that's why everything that happens normally in that District Two area by Salem Road, Brownbridge Road, it affects all of us that lives in that area. And reading on what Salem Road overlay is about, it's supposed to be a town home field. That's what it states right here in, on the document. In order to create a more livable and walkable Salem Road area, the overlay encourages creation of cluster of close-knit growth that keeps the small-town charm of Newton County. That's the document that's written from Development Services before how we're supposed to have Salem overlay. And so that's why I was questioning what was going to be there, because if not, it's not going with compliance of that town home field. And I would love to hear from the churches. I would love to hear from the people that live in that area of talking with developers, saying, hey, can you tell us what's going to be there so that we can work together on what type of businesses that would be there? Because that area, and I thank you also, because you send us these developments to me and Commissioner Mason, because it affects our area. And so that's why I'm speaking on it. And that's why my concern is there, because we all live in that corridor.
Yes, ma'am. And what you're reading is accurate, and this is why this table was designed for that, so that the particular uses go in the particular tier that would allow, that would maintain that character of the Salem overlay.
All right. All in favor? All opposed? Three to one. Oh, four to one. I thought Commissioner Hittler was the way. Four to one. All right. Before we go move to the next one, let's all keep in mind, this is the same, the same exact almost issue, it's just a different number. For the, for the sake of time, thank you. Ms. Appleweight?
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Our next petition is also an overlay tier change. It's actually the adjacent parcel. It's twenty four dash zero 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 four. This is located at four thousand and nine Salem Road. The existing land use map or the flume is a development node. The existing zoning is general commercial. This is in Salem overlay tier one. They are proposing to go to overlay tier three. Parcel is point eight four acres. The tax ID zero zero one three dash zero five seven eight, located in the South River Watershed, District Two. The owner is Anthony Kay Gray. The petitioner is John Nix, and he's going to be represented by Mr. Mark Walton. And again, they're, they're requesting to go to the Salem overlay tier three to allow appropriate commercial uses. And on seven twenty-three, the planning commission recommended denial by a vote of two one, and the concerns cited, you know, the types of commercial uses that could possibly go there. Character area is the same, live-work corridor, which allows commercial uses and a general commercial zoning. And again, the table is the same, it's the same situation. And they're tier one. Their current zoning allows for residential, which they are not zone residential. And when we move over to where they're zoned commercial, the tier one is absent from that column. So they can't use any of the uses in either of those columns. And in conclusion, the parcel is own commercial from the seventies. There's a home currently on this one. In 2013, the Salem overlay incorporated into the zoning ordinance, and a residential tier was assigned. The property would remain, it remained legal nonconforming because essentially there was a home occupied by residents living on a commercial property. So it was still legal nonconforming. And then, of course, in 2023, the GDOT started acquiring portions of parcels for their Salem Road widening project. So nor is allowed a continuity of the tier with the adjacent properties on either side. The applicant is requesting a tier change to the Salem overlay tier three. And changing the tier to tier three will make the zoning compatible with the overlay and hence bring the property into compliance with the current ordinance and uses, should the residential use be discontinued in the future. So should the BOC approve the tier change request? Staff recommends including the following updated conditions, which address concerns that were raised by the planning commission. And for the recommended conditions, I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record. Should the petition be approved by the board of commissioners? It should be approved for an OTC or overlay tier change to the Salem overlay tier three, conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board of commissioners. So A, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. One, the following uses shall not be permitted on the subject property. A, convenience stores with or without gas pumps. B, gas stations. C, vape shops. Adult novelty stores. Pawn shops, massage parlors, tattoo parlors, automobile sales and service, automobile repair, oil change, emission facilities, and car washes. And number two, compliance with Division four six zero, which is the Salem overlay of the Newton County zoning ordinance. So this is an area, so we, we're just looking at, this is the wicker shop down here. So this is literally the parcel next door. So this is literally the parcel next door. And again, we have the zoning here. The tier is currently residential, and they're requesting to go to the tier three, which the parcel adjacent to it now is. Development node is the flume. So this is a picture of the home that is there. It is currently occupied. My understanding is the same family has been living there for several years now. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, the applicant is here, Ms. Vice Chair.
Any questions for staff? This time, we'll open up our hearing. For those that want to speak in favor, OTC two four dash zero 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 four. You have ten minutes to do so. State your name and record for that, name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioners Mark Walton, Patrick and Associates, nine twenty-eight Black Lawn Road, Conyers, Georgia. Here to assist Mr. John Nix. I'm gonna try to keep this one really short and sweet, rather than reinvent the, the wheel there. Up on the screen, this is the next little parcel that we're looking at. It's fronting on existing Salem Road, and Salem is gonna swoop right behind it. There is a house, as Director Appleweight said. It's been occupied. It's my understanding if the house becomes vacant and then somebody tries to move back in after a while, that they could not move back in because it's commercially zoned property. So we're just trying to basically do some housekeeping here. We do, the same family owns this next parcel over, which will be the next case we discuss. And it would fit nicely with that one. We are, that's the survey of the property, and then that's the estate tract of the family. We have, on this particular list of the non-permitted uses, we have removed the convenience store and the gas station. We would like to have the ability to have those. That's our request. That's not staff's recommendation. We do have to be mindful, there is the cemetery that's one parcel away from our next parcel. And we have certain distance requirements that we would have to meet if it was a convenience store. I'll reserve my time and answer any questions that y'all have.
Thank you. At this time, well, we have, anybody that wants to speak in, in favor? You have eight minutes and fourteen, fifteen seconds. Anybody else who wants to speak in favor? That portion of our meeting is closed. Those who want to speak in opposition, you have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the record.
Marie Millian, again. Neely Manor. I just wanted to say that I'm not opposed to what they want to do, except for the gas station part. Like, if we can just keep all of these non-permittable uses, that would be fine. But no gas stations. We have enough. So let's just keep it to this list, you know, that we already have. We don't want to add. And I think on this list, we should also include liquor stores. Like, we shouldn't have any liquor stores on that property either. So that's the only thing I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in opposition? You have nine minutes, twenty-eight seconds to do so.
Maya Fairview Estates, District Three. Again, I am opposed because now he's really showing us that we really can't trust what they're wanting to put in these commercial properties. I'm understanding that it's just a zoning change, but that zoning of change allows for other changes that we don't want in our district or around our district. And then I need for you all to also keep in mind that we're talking about small parcels, but when you add it up, it's over ten acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Tracy. I live in Oak Hill. And y'all still never said what's gonna be there, what's gonna be in these zoning. Because when y'all put stuff there, our taxes go up. Yes, they do. So I'm trying, we, we trying to figure out what y'all putting for our children. That's what we trying to figure out. We don't need no, no more liquor stores. We don't need no more vape shop. We don't need none of that. Find some for our children to do. They don't have nothing to do. Going to Denny Dog Park, we have to take them, and then that skating thing out there, that's not for us. They do football. They do basketball. Find something for our children to do, other than a liquor store and a vape shop and a gun shop. Find some for them to do.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? So we have time for rebut, if, if it's needed. The opposition portion of our meeting is closed.
I'll keep it short. I, I do understand what the citizens are saying, but we're not trying to do a bait or switch here. The previous one, we were fine with not having the gas stations or the convenience stores. This, when combined with the other parcel, will be a little over four acres. It will not be the ten acres. And we would just like that flexibility to have the convenience store. We're not trying to do any bait and switch there. And, uh, other than that, we just appreciate your, uh, support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Appleweight, and I believe this is, we're still in District Two here. Ms. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Shayna, I am looking at this particular one, and of course, it does look different than the list that we had on the first one. Is there a way for us to have those same unallowable uses? Because I would like to see all, the same for all three of those. Or for all three of B, should I say?
Yes, sir. I think, it looks that they just removed A and B from the list. Everything is the same. But we would propose to keep the convenience store on the prohibited list.
Yes, I would like to.
And that would address the liquor stores. We don't have package stores in the county. So just beer and wine that would be sold at a convenience store, but yeah.
Correct. So just to reiterate what you just said, because maybe residents don't know that. We don't have an ordinance in place that allows package stores or liquor stores. So those aren't even allowable uses in our community. So we wouldn't have to make it a use that's not permitted because we don't even allow them in the community at all. We don't have an ordinance that allows that. And so you said you need to make a motion to state?
Put those back in.
Correct, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve OTC two four dash zero 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 four with the same following uses that should not be permitted, as we saw in the first one.
So it's staff's recommendations?
Staff's recommendations, correct.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Make this quick. Just a quick question. I know we mentioned that we don't have liquor stores and, I mean, well, ordinance for liquor stores. So if another board happens to come and change that ordinance to have liquor stores, would they be able to do that, to switch it over and change it to something else, if that ordinance comes in place?
If it becomes a use at the time, yes. It would apply to countywide.
So my question to Commissioner Mason, would you mind if we add liquor stores on there, just in case?
At this time, there's no reason to add it. So any board can change any ordinance. So if there's not an ordinance, there's no need to put a disallowable use. If we had an ordinance in place that said that we allowed packaged stores or liquor stores, then I think it would be appropriate to say that we're not going to allow it. But if we don't currently have an ordinance, now, any previous board can come, or a future board can come in and say, hey, things are changing. Yes, this is what we want to allow. But if this particular board says that we're not gonna put an ordinance in place, I, I, I don't think there's a reason to put that in place if we don't even have an ordinance that allows it. So that doesn't really make, uh, sense to do that. So thank you.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you. If I'm not mistaken, this is Franklin Gray's old store. Is that correct? Not yet. It's the house, but the store is next door to it. Okay. All right, I'm fine. I'll look under which one it is.
Anybody else? All in favor? All opposed? Last one, Ms. Appleweight. OTC two four dash zero 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 three, overlay tier change. Almost identical, right?
Same thing, yes. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Our final petition this evening, case number OTC twenty-four dash zero 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 three. This is located at three nine nine seven Salem Road. The flume is a development node. The existing zoning, it would be general commercial. Our two single family was the portion at the back, which is not gonna be included currently in this petition. The existing overlay is a Salem tier one. They're proposing to go to the tier three. And again, the parcel size for this one here, the, the original parcel was seven point two eight acres, but they're only requesting to do the three point five six eight acres as stated in your packets. And we'll do the aerial in a second. So I just want to make a note of that for the record. They're only requesting to do the acres that they currently own, and the rest, I think, went to GDOT. So it's a three point five six eight acres. It is in the South River, District Two. The owner is Ms. Franklin Gray. The petitioner is John Nix, and is represented by Mark Walton today. And again, the applicant would like to take the, switch the tier, request to change the tier over to tier three. So allow for the appropriate commercial uses. Just a brief history, on seven twenty-three, the planning commission recommended denial by a vote of two to one. And of course, they expressed similar concerns for this property of the types of commercial uses that could go there. This property is also in the live-work corridor character area, which allows for the commercial zoning, the commercial flume, as well as the commercial zoning. And just a conclusions to the findings, again, also zoned this way since nineteen seventies. There's a commercial building on this parcel along with a home that is unoccupied and has been unoccupied for several years, and another older storage building in the rear. And again, in twenty twenty-three, the Salem overlay was incorporated into the ordinance. The residential tier was assigned to the property. As a result, the overlay tier for the existing non-residential uses on the property became legal non-conforming. In twenty twenty-three, GDOT acquired a portion of the property for the road widening project for the Salem Road. The owner's requesting that the three point five six eight acres fronting the current Salem Road, which he still owns, be re-tiered to the Salem overlay tier three. Due to the time that's elapsed, again, they have that legal non-conforming status. The residential tier is not compatible with the commercial zoning, and this is why they're asking to go to tier three. And should the BOC approve the tier change request? Staff recommends including the following updated conditions, which addresses the concerns raised by the planning commission. And against the same chart, would be the same issue. Tier one is over here, but their zoning isn't included. So they can't do any of these uses. And these charts are several pages long. And then, of course, where their zoning is included, the tier one is not there. So they can't do those uses either. The recommended conditions, should the petition be approved by the board of commissioners? It should be approved for an overlay tier change to the Salem overlay tier three. Conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board of commissioners. A, to the owner's agreements to abide by the following development standards. One, the following uses shall not be permitted on the subject property. I'm just gonna read them into the record again. A, convenience stores with or without gasoline pumps. Gas stations. Vape shops. Adult novelty stores. Pawn, uh, pawn shops. Massage parlors. Tattoo parlors. Automobile sales and service. Automobile repair. Oil change. Emission facilities. And car washes. And two, they must remain in compliance with Division four six zero, which addresses, which is the Salem overlay in the Newton County zoning ordinance. So this parcel here, so the entire thing was seven point eight acres when GDOT moved in here. This is what the owners left with. This is the three point five six eight acres. I don't believe they own these two anymore. So this is what he's requesting to bring into the tier, where the star is. Of course, the current zoning for that one is a general commercial, and it's now adjacent to a tier three parcel. This is the current tier here. So these two have now been re-tiered to tier three. So it would make it contiguous to, if this one were included as well. The development node is the flume. This is in District Two. South River watershed. So this is what is currently there, the building in front. And there is like an abandoned home, I think this little, the roof, you can see the roof here. And then there's like another abandoned structure behind the store. This is the cemetery that the board was inquiring about earlier. So it is actually adjacent to this large, this parcel. And then the Salem Common Road is across, is opposite across the road. I think there is a church, this is the church building here that I believe the board also inquired about. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, the applicant is here.
Staff questions? Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. At this time, we're moving to our hearing. We'll entertain those that are in favor of this overlay tier change. First, you have a ti, you have a time limit of ten minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening again. Mark Walton, Patrick and Associates, nine twenty-eight Black Lawn Road, Conyers, Georgia. Thank you all for your time. We're gonna keep it really brief. This is the next parcel to the north. And it is that parcel in pink. We just re-tiered that one right there. And it is, as Director Appleweight said, it's just three and a half acres, plus or minus. It does not include the back that we're trying to do. There is another little strip that's not part of this, that's between the cemetery and us. There's the survey of the parcel with the three point five whatever acres. And again, we went through staff's list and we cut out their A and B. And we are asking for the flexibility to have a convenience store or a gas station. This property has had a convenience store. It hasn't been used for that for a while, but it's had that for, for decades. I'll reserve the rest of my time, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? That portion of our meeting is closed. The next portion of our hearing will be for those who are in opposition. You have ten minutes to state your case. Those who want to speak in opposition.
It is I again, Maya, Fairview Estates, District Three. I am opposing this, even though I know you all will approve. What I am asking is that you include convenience stores with and without pumps, as well as gas stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to oppose? That portion of our meeting is closed as well. Ms. Appleweight, I believe this is, you once again, Commissioner Mason.
All right, we finally got it. So I move that we actually approve OTC two four dash zero 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 three with staff conditions of there being no convenience stores, no gas stations with or without pumps. We want to make sure that those first two are in alignment with this one as well. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Cowan.
It's still in the ground? Because it used to be a gas station.
I mean, I've no, that store's been there for seventy years at least. Okay, just a question.
Commissioner Sanders.
Has there been a conversation with the churches? Because there's one directly across the street, as I mentioned, and one next door. Has there been any conversation with the churches on, discussion on what may or may not be there?
Um, not that I'm aware of at this time. I don't know the applicant met with them as yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders. Any other questions? Any other comments? All in favor?
Alright, tell me what the motion is.
To approve the tier change subject to the staff conditions.
With the staff conditions or with the additional conditions of no convenience store?
That's included in the staff condition.
All in favor?
I ain't too sure about that.
All opposed? It fails three to, two, two to three. Have you on set?
Actually, this, so this tier will remain residential. Um, yeah, it's what we voted for today. So they won't be able to use the property.
What's that?
They won't be able to use the property because of the tier and the current, and the current vote tonight. Because they can't, they can't get a business license, yeah.
My question is, can we have another motion to allow convenience store? That's what they want, isn't it? Isn't that Mark? What y'all want? Okay, okay. Well then.
You can during the same meeting revisit a motion, so why don't, Mr. Mason, why don't you make the motion again? And just like you did before, we'll vote against it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I'd like to make the motion to approve OTC two four dash zero 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 three with staff recommendations that disallows convenience stores, gas stations with or without pumps.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, without, without, so this same list, convenience stores with or without gasoline pumps, gas stations, so the same list.
Well, they won't be able to use the property. If they can't use it for a convenience store, then it's fine. At least they'll be able to use the property.
That's correct.
I'm, 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 I'm not sure what I'm voting on now.
So as I understand the motion, it is to approve the tier change subject to the staff recommendations.
Correct.
The staff recommendations prohibit use of the property as a convenience store whether or without gas pumps, gas stations, vape shops, adult novelty pawn shops, massage parlors, tattoo parlors, automobile repair and calling.
That's correct.
Those will be prohibited.
Okay.
Meaning you cannot use them.
Okay. I'll second, I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I thought we had to put it back on the agenda, had to be most replacing on the agenda another number because it failed, and there was no, the attorney, if I may please, Attorney Patrick, when he came back and said, he said, well, I'm not going to let it fail. I'm going to say, we're going to have to do this. I think the proper way they should have been put, placed back on the agenda.
Within, so within the same meeting, before you take up the next item, you can revisit a motion.
How many times have we did, did he hear from this?
I don't know that we've ever done it before. I don't know if it's ever happened.
Did you, um, did you seem to pay the work on it, if you would be so kind?
Any other comment? Oh, Commissioner Sanders.
Can you definitely send me the parliamentary procedure on that? Because that doesn't sound like parliamentary procedure, how we just did that.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? All opposed? Pass is three to two.
Now you don't get gas stations.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. That was our last petition for the evening.
The zoning portion of our meeting is now closed, and we'll move to citizen comments. Citizen comments. You have three minutes. Uh, state your name and address, please.
My name is Maya Allen Neely, Fairview Estates, District three. And I'm questioning um this last vote. Um, they weren't questioned when they approved the first two. So I'm not understanding why the questioning of the last one, when it was denied, there was conversation and a new vote. They voted. They knew what they were doing. I saw Commissioner Cowan. He hesitated. But he voted, and it should count, and it should stand.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Let me tell you just like this.
Please state your name and rec- address.
Tracy Belter. I stay right down the street from Marcelo's. That's where I live at. Oak Hill. Y'all sitting up here thinking this a game. This is not a game. This is our life y'all playing with. Y'all sitting up here raising taxes, voting on stuff that, that, that ain't got nothing to do with us. You're doing it just because you could do it. Like I told you. Like I told you, Mason.
Address me, address me.
And I, just like I told you, and the emails me and you had. God gonna get you too. You better believe it. Don't think it's not one. Where you sitting at? Where you sitting right there? Don't, don't, don't do it. Because every last one of y'all sitting up here need to be investigated. Because if Marcelo's had to be investigated, y'all need to be investigated too. I'm going to keep it real up here with you. You ain't doing nothing. You ain't doing nothing for our children. You ain't doing them a raising taxes. You're trying to put liquor stalls. You're trying to put convenience stalls. But what? We got a thousand convenience stalls on Salem Road. We barely can get on Salem Road. So why would you do it? Why? You did it. They voted. And y'all had another vote, like she said. Don't do that, Mason.
Talk to me.
I'm talking to you too. I'm talking to you too. Enough is enough. And then trying to build uh houses on, sell the houses on Salem Road before you try to put some apartments there. Sell those. Get these veterans off the street. Land under bridges. Put them in them houses what you trying to tear down and put convenience store. That's what you do. Because I, I, I'd be glad to vote. But I guarantee you, I'm, I'm, I'm going to email the governor. All y'all need to be investigated up here. Because if Marcelo stuck his hand in it, y'all did too.
Thank you.
Marie Million, Neely Manor. Okay, so the topic that I want to cover here is the impact fees. A few weeks ago, I learned that the impact fees for Newton County were seventeen hundred dollars. And I noticed in the um news that Henry County had increased their impact fees. So I was hoping that this is something that our county could also put on the agenda because it would help to have greater impact fees. You know, we can get parks, when we're getting all these developers to come in, they can look at doing things for the citizens that already live here. Um, next item, District three. Can that park be put on the agenda again? Because we still need a park within District three. Last but not least, on the agenda, I'd like to see an update on that A B M contract. I know it was discussed a while ago that maybe we can get out of that contract. And since we're spending about five hundred thousand dollars per year on it, I think that would be something good to look at. So those three items, hopefully they can get on the agenda soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, Board. My name is Tercia Hage. I'm a Newton County resident for the last fifteen years. I'm also the Board Secretary for Silver Ridge Farms. I'm here to ask about the moratorium. On the twentieth of this month, there will be a zoning meeting regarding appeals for four different plats in the area of Harold Dobbs. This will directly affect my subdivision. Plats are constantly coming. How soon will a moratorium be in place? Commissioner Mason and I discussed this informally. So I just need to know, when are we going to put in moratorium in place? We need one like yesteryear. As you guys know, construction is ongoing at Harold Dobbs, and it's a nightmare, and more homes are coming there. So when will a moratorium be in place? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Sheila Sawyers, and I live at, in uh Covington, Georgia, and I'm in Zone four. And I'm here back again. I was here back in maybe three or four months ago dealing with the Newton County Low Income Senior Citizen Repair. And when it happened that he, when he said he was finished, it, there was other items that he didn't do. So I wouldn't sign off on the contract for him to get paid. And the contract, the uh terms of the contract was that I had to be satisfied and all work had to be done. But it wasn't, and I didn't sign off on it. So anyway, they kept calling, calling. I said, I'm not, he had to come back and redo the stuff he didn't do. Because I have bathrooms and, you know, masturbatory bathroom that he put a uh shower kit into with no rails that I can't use. So anyway, they kept trying to give me a sign. I said, I'm not signing. He come back out and fix it. He never did. They kept calling, calling, calling. So anyway, he stopped calling. I went to, to the office up here and talked to Nwanka and found out, you know, why, you know, they not calling. They, they go ahead and approve the uh contract. And they, she said, uh, yeah, we had amended. I said, why didn't you notify me? You didn't even notify me that, you know, they had been amended. So anyway, she, I, I, I did the record, the open record thing. And uh, what's her name? It's Smith up here. Told me that uh she didn't do that, that Nwanka had, you know, do it. And I went and talked with her. So she said, well, we can't find the amended contract. I said, I want the whole, you know, the one that I'm supposed to sign and the one that y'all amended that I didn't know about and, and y'all signed it, somebody signed. I said, I just want a copy. So I've been waiting like two months, and it's still, you know, haven't given, given, been. Anyway, I went back up there. She told me this last time I went up there, that uh they couldn't find it, and I couldn't get it. I said, how you going to tell me, I guess, open record thing, that I can't get a amended copy of my contract? She said, we, we, we can't find it. You can't get it. So I want to know why I can't get that amended contract. They see who signed off on it, so they get the contract to get paid for work he didn't do.
Uh, we can't answer questions right now, but if you leave your name and number with Mr. Brown over here, he will get that to Mr. Cooper, and we'll look into that for you. How about that?
Okay.
After the meeting, just come see Mr. Brown.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Alright. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, just to bring additional clarity to what we just did, um, it, it was stated by a resident that we are allowing convenience stores, we are allowing gas stations. And so I just wanted to bring clarity uh that what we just approved disallows, meaning that it does not allow convenience stores. It doesn't, with or with gas pumps, it does not allow gas stations. It does not allow vape shops, adult novelty stores, which normally, when you have a ministry or a church nearby, uh, they don't want any type of adult novelty shops. Uh, they don't want uh any type of massage parlors or things of that nature uh because of ministry purposes. So I think uh what we approved tonight addresses uh those concerns. Also tattoo parlors, they're not permitted. Um, automobile sales and service, automobile repair, oil change, emission facilities, car washes. Um, I hear, I have heard for the past six years, Commissioner Mason, when are we going to get sit-down restaurants in our area? When are we going to get uh restaurants with healthier options in our community? Um, and so by approving this tonight, what it does, it kind of helps us move in that direction. Uh, and so when I have my colleagues that may or may not understand what we were trying to do, we want to make sure that the current land usage is in alignment and is in compliance with the, the current overlay. That overlay helps us steer in the direction that this board wants and that the community wants uh our development to look like. Uh, and so what we did tonight was actually making sure that we have a level of uh control over how this development is being used and how it's being done. Uh, also, uh, as we've mentioned before, these are not going to just be pop-up businesses. I know our development, uh Director of Development Services says, depending on what type of business that wants to come to this area, uh, all down Salem Road, if you notice, you already have uh areas that really are already, you have your Walmart, you have your McDonald's, you have your Publix. You have all of your retail in this area. So this particular area is just in alignment and compliant with what's already there. Uh, but we want to make sure that we have, you know, those healthier restaurant options that our residents are looking for. That we have those sit-down restaurants uh that they're looking for, so that they don't have to always take their monies uh and invest it into a different community. Our goal is to make sure that we provide development uh that is smart growth where our residents don't have to travel so far to be able to actually get to nice things that they deserve because they are taxpayers. Uh, this board has also done what they could. I know when I came in back in two thousand and nineteen, we were at thirteen point four four percent millage rate. Uh, we are now at uh proposing eight point two. And so this board has done what they could do to decrease uh the, the revenue uh to help provide relief to our residents. So I just wanted to put that on record. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just want to speak on uh the statement that the um young lady made earlier in regards to crime is everywhere. And that is true. Crime is everywhere. But we can't just say crime is everywhere without assisting with putting a plan together. And that is true. We cannot stop all crime. And we cannot control people and their actions. But we can also stop certain things from making crime increase in various areas. And why I mention that, because I just sent to my colleagues, um, other counties actually have this ordinance in place, and it's called a surveillance ordinance. To where you require your gas stations, your vape stores, your stores that are in certain areas, make sure they have high-tech surveillance. So if something happens in those stores in those areas, then your law enforcement will be able to have some evidence to pull from those stores to be able to find out what's going on. The incidents that just happened in the, in the two districts recently, that you saw in the paper, those stores had no surveillance tapes. So guess what? Your law enforcement couldn't pull to find out who the perpetrators were. Because there was no surveillance there. And so those are the ordinances that we definitely need to put in place in regards to safety and protection for our areas. So hopefully, we can come together, and I know this board is knowledgeable, to come together to put an ordinance in place in regards to making our, making sure our areas. to come together to put an ordinance in place in regards to making our, making sure our areas, our stores, especially the ones that are open twenty-four hours, or at least eleven, have surveillance in the area. Um, I truly believe that we need a citizen reviewer board. And the reason why, because there's gonna be various things that citizens don't want to see that we may have to also speak with them in regards to that. By having a citizen reviewer board, as I mentioned before, other counties actually have in place, we can hear directly from the residents. Just for instance, like I just stated, have, have we spoke to the churches? Do they, have there have been a conversation with them on what they want to see in that area to where they can be a happy medium, you hear me say that all the time. A happy medium for the developer, or the property owner, and those that actually live there. Because nine times out of ten, the person that owns the business does not live in the area. So it's always a must to have a conversation with those residents that live in the area so they get a better understanding of what the people in the area want. The reason why there's such a, a fight against convenience stores and also your gas stations, because just a year ago, there was a group of people fighting for just two blocks from where that, where we probably might put a convenience store, but it was not put in place, a convenience store was not put in place. They just fought to stop gas stations in that area. So that's why you saw me so against it because I've heard from residents that live in that Salem Road corridor of what they want to see in that area. And I live not too, I live like two blocks from the, uh, uh, half a mile from the area. So I talk to a lot of residents that live in that area and I know exactly what they want in the area. So we definitely need to involve our residents in our decision-making process by having town halls, by having a board that we can put in place to hear from residents that we possibly can appoint a certain amount of people from our districts that we can hear from, that developers can talk to directly, and those people will be liaison to the community and they will be a liaison to the commissioners. We need to put that in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice. I was more, never, never more excited more than I was at the ribbon cutting of the, um, Spring Hill Park. And there was a park that I think that most, I know Ronnie, uh, Commissioner Cowan, and myself and others, we all worked hard, uh, with the staff to build a nice park over there. And, um, it changed district, but we, we still got the work done. And that's good. And we also got the work done at our cousin's school. And so I'm hoping that, um, that we get an update on it so that Commissioner Cowan and, and I can look at what we had talked about the times, the hours that we stayed over there and walked around and, and the improvements to that particular, uh, building that we want, that we want to see in the community. And the improvements that will make it better. And that, that would be a good, something good. But I'm still, but lastly, I'm a little sad about Nelson Heights. And I told someone, you, you know, it's a, here over last month, it's a possible rape out there up on the pavilion, man. Come on, y'all. You closed it down, but yet you, this stuff happened, you just left it. The children didn't get a chance to eat the, the, uh, summer meal because the school system cut the food off. So they came to my house, in case you know. And then you cut the security cam off, so if there was a possible rape, then they couldn't, wasn't on camera. They sent me a two thousand dollar bill. Come on, y'all. We can do better than that. So I'm hoping that, at the very least, and I remember something they would say when, when we changed possession, said that we gonna owe me back up, we gonna do this, and never did what we should have done, at least for the kids, at least for the community. And I think it's, it's really a reflection on what we should be doing in the community. There's no reason that place shouldn't be, should be closed. They should be have after, after school to tour programs. And the only thing I said, when we came up here, y'all, it's been leaves, I said, we'll just, just make it better than what I was doing. And it's closed. And the ideas that come up are not resonating with anything. So I'm hoping that in lieu of, of, of anything, that maybe Commissioner Cowan and I can work together or with, with Harold Cooper, and maybe get something going over there that's beneficial to the community. But we're gonna have to address the rape, the possible rape that happened over there up on the pavilion. We're gonna have to address the all-night basketball shooting with car lights on, and the selling of drugs. And that's exactly what we didn't want over there. And y'all allowed to come in because you don't live there. Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Uh, I apologize for the confusion on that vote. I was thinking more of a, of the historical nature of that store cause I've known it since I was a small, very small kid. Um, I would like to see it back in the family and, um, back operating like it used to. Um, but I apologize for that and thank you, Patrick, for helping us get that straight. So everything on that, those three zonings or four zonings is all consistent with each other. Is that correct? I understand that, okay. So, uh, I'm glad of that. Um, as J.C. mentioned, something about Spring Hill Park and, uh, very proud of that park out there. I think he and I both are. Um, I have been talking to, uh, Mike McCrory with Sunbelt, uh, on cousin's school. There was a little bit of hiccup with the city of Covington. Uh, I spoke today with the city manager and the mayor and they're gonna get, help us get those, uh, worked out, to get those permits done for the, uh, I believe it's a stormwater and a sewer issue that we're having to deal with right now. But, uh, hopefully soon, uh, that project will be working, uh, very soon. And J.C., we'll, we'll talk about Nelson Heights when we get a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowan. I have no, um, I have no comments at this time. But well, other than I went to the, uh, Spring Hill Park opening and it was, uh, I was, uh, pleasantly surprised at how nice that place is and what they've done with the, the land. And I, I could, I could never envision, um, what they were able to do with that piece of property. So it's a, it's definitely a jewel in the county for sure. So, um, glad to see that for, especially, um, uh, for that part of my district, to be honest with you. Um, I'm right down the road and I've already had some of the, people from my district, uh, call and, and thank the board for that. With that, I don't think we have a need for an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We stand adjourned with any?